This legislature is back from recess. When we left off, ladies and gentlemen, last night, we were in Bill 245-33COR,[20.57][20.57]introduced by Speaker Wampad and Munia Barnes. We -- I do know that it was discussion by Senator Frank Blas. And Senator Frank Blas, I think you had an inquiry to the speaker. Have you decided on what we want to work with this morning?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, I'm going to yield my time back to the speaker.
No, me. Back to me. Oh. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, at the time when -- yesterday when we were having this discussion, I thank Senator Blas for then -- for his questions and Senator Tom Ada as well. We had some other discussions at the end of the day yesterday. And so to address all of the concerns is that then I would like to just make a motion here to delete then subsection A, which is on page one, in its entirety. That's the very first thing. And if I may do that, of course, and then everything else would mean renumbering of the subsections.
On the proposed amendment to strike subsection A, any objection? Anybody wish to be heard on it? Anybody wish to be heard on it? No objection.
And, okay. Thank you very much. So what it would mean then, you go to B, and B then will be renumbered to A. And then that would then now actually looking at the authorization now to allow for the solicitation and contract for the lease -- for lease and operation or to operate -- lease and operate. That was some of the discussion that we had with our members. So to add the word "and operate" the Internet Cafe. So...
So on line six, lease and operate.
Yeah, the Internet Cafe.
Any objections to that amendment?
On line seven is then for the operation of, it's going to be of a cafe and food establishment.
Any objection?
And food, and then to continue, to add the word cafe and then to leave the food establishment. So it's "and," cafe and food establishment.
Senator Blas.
I just guess if the author can yield to question basically, what do we anticipate to be the difference, the definition between the two? I'm just concerned, we say food establishment, we're going to go a full-blown cafeteria here.
Well, actually, what it would still be the same because it's a food establishment to provide drink and food services or, well, maybe, and originally, I know that in section A that we took out the selling of coffee and other drinks and snacks. I mean, that was, I know we were supposed to put that language in that originally had amended and that I was going to go to that where it says to drink and food services to change to make it a food establishment to provide coffee, drinks, and other snacks.
As opposed to...
Where would you put that, in line what?
It's in line seven where it says to provide coffee, drinks, and snacks. And that was in the original A.
Mrs. Speaker, I bring this up because as opposed to a cafe, then what would be the definition?
No, so that's what the cafe is, would be then coffee, drinks, and snacks. It's not a full-blown restaurant, but there's going to be, you know, the snacks, that type of, okay. Unless you're thinking food establishment, it's like what you're thinking of, like, so for the operation of a cafe to provide coffee, drinks, or snacks. Is that what you're thinking of?
By the confused gesture and your look and your face, can we just have a little bit of a timeout here so that we can tighten up that language?
Okay. Can you, can I ask if the senator then can look at that language and just let me do the other minor, just one, two more minor amendments and we can go back? Okay, thank you. All right, so if we can just hold line seven then. And on line 11 is to delete then for the lease of the frontage property "and," so that it'll be for the lease of the Internet Cafe.
Any objection? Deleting on line 11, frontage of, frontage property "and."
"And." Oh, and I forgot "and." And on line eight, after the word general public, put a comma, as deemed, so then these are for patrons and public, general public, comma, as deemed appropriate by the library board. No? Okay, so, no?
Line eight.
I'm fine with that. Okay, so there's an objection, so delete. Okay, no problem. Yeah, okay.
She's withdrawing it.
Yeah, I'm withdrawing it. You're right, so no problem. So the only one now is, I guess, if we may, Senator, did you have now where it says line seven, Agatia, for the operation of a cafe...
And just put cafe to provide food and drink.
To provide food and drinks, but then no snacks. Oh, food, okay, so you're saying to provide food...
Drink and food services for library patrons and the general public.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
What you have there exactly, just take out food establishment, cafe, to provide drink and food services for library patrons.
To provide drink and food services. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That's the entire amendments. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
On, go ahead.
And so the last thing then is that, yes, I have Senator Munia Barnes as my second co-sponsor. I'd like to add Senator Frank Blas and Senator Tom Ada as well. Thank you very much.
On the, Senator Blas.
Yesterday had brought up the concern with regards to the policy and procedures. Are we still putting, is there, has there been an amendment made to basically say interim? That will go ahead and permit the interim policy?
On page three.
Can you go ahead and make it?
So, yes, the discussion also focused, and I apologize, on page three, line four, where the library board then shall then establish interim policy and procedures, you know, for the administration of this section until, you know, the AAA process, you know, has been completed.
Any objection? The co-sponsorship, any objection?
Yourself and Senator Munia Barnes and Tom Ada. Thank you very much.
Okay. On the main motion. On the, oh, wait. Senator Espaldón.
If I could just ask a question of the author.
There's a question being posed, authors?
The question is that we're allowing for, and before I ask you to yield, the question is, is if we're going down this road of allowing for an Internet Cafe, is this cafe going to have the privilege of using the Internet hookup of the library that is being paid for by the library, or are they going to have to hook up their own services?
Madam Speaker, there's questions being posed.
The Internet service is basically, I mean, it's an Internet Cafe. The question is, if the library has its own Internet costs, will this cafe be utilizing the library's Internet, or are they going to have to provide their own? And I would imagine that the answer would be that they would use the Internets. So is there going to be any consideration that should be put in here that perhaps should reflect that they're going to be able to compete with a, I mean, that they shouldn't be allowed to compete against other cafes in the area at government cost?
My understanding is that, first of all, the library will have the Internet. The library also will have laptops that will be made available to be used by the patrons even in the cafe. And what they wanted to do was then to, that the monies that they're going to collect would be that, to pay for their needs, which is on page two, which will be for improvement, supplies, programs, maintenance, but that they would also, in their RFP, they're going to make sure that they are also going to be responsible for maintaining the computers because apparently they have them already and they will be available and they will be using them. But the upkeep and maintenance of it, that the individuals who have the bid to run the cafe will be responsible for all those. That's what, because we had asked...
I guess in essence, they'll be using the library's Internet.
Yes.
And to be able to establish...
Yes, because already they have the computers there that are available, but they want to make, they want to be able to, I guess, promote the cafe at the same time by having those, they have six laptops available already to be used.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the main motion, any other questions? Senator Tom Ada.
I kind of missed the discussion that was had earlier, but it appears that we really kind of are making this a little bit more complicated than it is. And really, I think what we should be doing is, first of all, just repealing that part of what the original law was, which had intended to lease the yard space, frontage space or whatever for a mobile canteen type, right? Okay, you did that, fine. Now, the second part then is, what we really should be authorizing then is to authorize the library to lease, authorizing them to lease that portion of the building that is known as the, in the title it says, "to lease that portion of the building referred to as the Internet Cafe for the purpose of operating and managing a high-quality and reasonably-priced cyber cafe services." Now, all the details of, you know, who's going to pay for the Internet and all that, that really should be part of the request for proposal. But I think for us here, our responsibility should be to, do we want to give them that authority to lease out that government space for purposes of operating a cyber cafe services for the library patrons? And if we do, then really, that's the extent of it. I don't think we want to go into the business plan, you know, formulating the business plan for the library and stipulating what is the purpose of the revenues that are to be generated. So we're authorizing them to lease floor space for the purpose of the operation of a cyber cafe, and the funds generated shall be used for the maintenance of the facility and other programs, period.
I think that's how it ended, finally. That's all we have. We repealed A, and though the question was raised, there were no amendments to include any of those provisions. On the main motion, on the main motion, do you wish to close, Madam Speaker, or Senator Munia Barnes?
She just must, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I do rise and support Bill 245-33COR, and I thank the author for making me her co-sponsor. But just in speaking with the good senator from Santa Rita, there were some commitments on the amendments that we needed to take care of. And on page two, page two. Yeah, a motion for legal counsel that in anywhere in the legislation as it relates to the frontage property, to have legal counsel work the...
Delete it, okay.
Delete, yeah.
Any objection to authorizing legal counsel to remove all mention of frontage property?
So that's page two, yeah, and, okay. That's it, right? Thank you.
On the main motion, on a motion to send the bill down to the voting file.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, yesterday, we left off on proffering some amendments, and I do have those amendments ready. They're really short amendments, and I didn't want to Xerox, didn't want to cut down a tree just for a couple of short amendments here. We're going to page three, and it's down on the second paragraph of A. "After $25,000 each toward of the minor and then in case of said injury to a person, imputable liability shall be further limited to medical dental hospital expenses incurred by the injured person." Right after the injured person, like the property amendment, "an attorney's fees as allowed by Article 6 of Chapter 26 of 7GCA."
Is everybody following? On page three, and it's one, two, three, four, five, six lines from the bottom where it says injured person at the words, "and attorney fees as allowed by Article 6 of Chapter 26 of 7GCA." Any objections? Any discussion? No objections? So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the second amendment will be on page four, on line one, and it's after the word attorney fees will be what will add "as allowed by Article 6 of Chapter 26 of 7GCA."
So then, page four, on the top of page four, after attorney fees, at the words, "as allowed by Article 6 of Chapter 26, 7GCA." Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Senators, are you following along? No objections? No questions? No discussions? So ordered.
And the third amendment, Madam Speaker, will be on page four, on paragraph C. It's just to delete the paragraph, the complete paragraph there.
Which is C, subsection C?
Yes.
So the other amendment then on page four is to delete the two lines of subsection C. Any discussion? I hear C some going on in between, but I'm not sure whether some of you would like to... Yeah, but how about the rest of us over there? Senator, yeah, that's what I'm saying, because I know you were, you were kind of asking around for copies to... I just want to make sure that legal counsel as well is really on top of this, that on page three, legal counsel, this seventh line from the bottom is to add the words "and attorney fees as allowed by Article 6 of Chapter 26, 7GCA." And page four, the same thing, as allowed by Article 6 of Chapter 26, 7GCA. And Senator Torres, the last one that I haven't yet gavelled in was the deletion of subsection C.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And we can just have legal counsel renumber the remaining paragraphs, so as we take out C, then we'll just move up.
Senator Torres, are you, do you have a question or comment on C?
We have a, we need a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. So, all right, so then, but the last amendment here to, that's, to delete will be the adjustment every two years by the judicial council to reflect any increases in the cost of living in Guam. So that's the last amendment. Any objections to that amendment? No objections? So ordered. Okay, Senator Ada? And legal counsel, yes, will... Oh, and the last amendment then is that legal counsel then to, for any technical amendments in the adjustment of the subsections. So ordered.
And I'd like to add Senator Tom Ada and Senator Jim Espaldón as co-sponsors, Madam Speaker.
Senator Ada and Senator Espaldón, no objections. So ordered. On the main motion now, if anyone would like to speak. I know some of you had some questions yesterday. This is your opportunity, main motion, to be able to speak, but I... Oh, you did, right, so you're done. Senator Torres, I know you had some questions yesterday. Is anybody else who would like to speak on the main motion? There being none. So on the motion to send 149 to the third reading file, no objections, so ordered. Bill number 185. Senator Rodriguez.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I believe when we broke, there was some efforts to make amendments on Bill 185.
Yes, I'm trying to find now my list where I, we left off, who did we leave off with I think the, yeah, the last person I had on 185 was Senator Espaldón. So Senator Espaldón, I know that when, yesterday I had asked that because of the concern from, if you can recap and correct me if I'm wrong, is the message that was sent down from the AG's office of several concerns about several sections. And I've asked, rather given you an opportunity yesterday before bringing this forward again this morning, to proffer some amendments addressed by the Attorney General's office. And if anybody else also, I know at one time Senator S. Nicholas indicated that he was also going to do some amendments, but unfortunately, you know, he won't be in this morning due to a medical appointment. So I will then turn the floor over to you, Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm, I'm sorry, I was doing a few things, multitasking here. The, when you initially just called upon, right now, a few minutes ago, I just was going to ask is, did the author of the bill just say that he has a few amendments that he would like to make?
Senator, none? Okay, so no, he does not, then.
Okay. Well, if I may, Madam Speaker, the, I was informed that the Attorney General may be coming down between 10:30 and 11:00. And because of, because of her memo or letter to us, it might be who was to perhaps wait for her to chime in on some of these concerns that she has, whether they're valid in our minds or not, but at least to be able to expound upon them and give us the opportunity perhaps to talk with her. So I'll leave it to your discretion, Madam Speaker, whether to give her a few minutes and allow her to make a call, see if she is coming down. If not, then we'll proceed.
Yeah, because I did say that I wouldn't mind, that's why yesterday, to set it aside all that time for the rest of the afternoon.
Okay. Well, then, in that case, Madam Speaker, you know, there are some concerns, there...
Yes, so you may continue, Senator. I mean, I'm hoping to make it here within five minutes, then it'll be 10:30 by time.
Well, I tell you what, if you can give me one minute to just make a call and see if she'll be here, because if she's not going to be here, then there's no use waiting for her.
Okay, so we'll do that then, just to make a phone call.
Thank you.
Recession. Senators, I understand there are still more amendments being prepared for one forty-nine, so I'm going to set it aside and I'll move on. One, I mean, sorry, one eighty-five, thank you, Senator. We had finished one, uh... That's why you're our secretary, thank you so very much. So I'm gonna go to the next bill, and Senator Torres, you're recognized on two forty-eight.
Ms. Zuzos Mossi, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, I moved to accept bill number two four eight dash thirty-three COR as substituted by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations and Youth Development, and further substituted on the floor.
On the motion to, to accept, no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Madam Chair, I also moved that we place bill number two four eight dash thirty-three on the third reading file. And if I may be given permission to discuss?
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, bill number two four eight dash thirty-three is a bill intended to modernize Guam's family leave laws and to find a balance that benefits both families and government employers. I'd like to read from the legislative findings and intent. Illes Laturan Guahan finds that it is beneficial to local families, the local community, and local workforce to provide a reasonable amount of paid leave to new mothers. Research shows that paid leave contributes not only to the health and welfare of mother and child, but also makes it more likely that women will return to the workforce after giving birth. Likewise, it is essential to the development of creating strong families that we provide all parents, regardless of gender, the time to bond and welcome a new child into their home and family. What inspired me to introduce this bill also is in January twenty fifteen, the President of the United States issued a presidential memorandum directing that federal executive agencies increase the amount of paid leave to be used by federal employees and increase it to the equivalent of six weeks in connection with the birth or adoption of a child. In doing so, the President so aptly stated that now, more than ever, our nation's economic success rests on our ability to empower our citizens to choose jobs that best utilize their talents and interests. All employers, including the federal government, should support parents to ensure that they can both contribute fully in the workplace and also meet the needs of their families. The availability of paid maternity leave, for example, has shown to increase the likelihood that mothers return to their jobs following the birth of a child. And maternity leave has also shown to improve the health and development outcomes of the infant. In addition, it is critically important for parents and their newborn or newly adopted child to have the opportunity to form strong family attachments and relationships. At present, under Guam law, in the event of childbirth or adoption of a child, five years or younger, we provide four weeks of so-called maternity leave under section forty-one oh seven of Article four, Title four, GCA, and four works, four weeks of so-called paternity leave under section forty-one oh seven point one. Under current law, the eligibility is to a female employee occupying a permanent position, which statute doesn't clearly define this. And paternity leave is granted to a male employee occupying a permanent position. Our current law also provides for an additional leave of up to six months that may be taken and charged against a combination of leave, six leave or unpaid leave. What my bill does is it actually, if, if you were to look at current law, it's quite ambiguous about how leave is to be taken. And in discussions with the Department of Administration, oftentimes the application of leave in the various agencies is, is applied at the discretion and sometimes a misinterpretation of the law by the HR personnel. What I have done with bill number two four eight is I've taken into account the needs to provide adequate leave for a mother upon the birth of a child. And my focus primarily... adequate leave for a mother upon the birth of a child, and my focus primarily in this bill is to ensure that a mother, a woman who gives birth to a child, is given ample time to recover, to medically recover from the symptoms of having given birth. And what my bill does then is it extends for the birth mother her leave, her paid administrative leave, from four weeks to six weeks. It gives her an additional two weeks. There are many considerations that also had to be taken into account when we were applying leave with regard to the EEOC Equal Employment Opportunity Commission concerns, and what we didn't want to do was set a precedent for challenge later on. So what we did, as you understand now, the climate has changed a little bit. What we once thought as a traditional couple with a family is now different. It is no longer just mother and father. It could be mother, it could be single mother, it could be a gay couple, father and father, male and male, or it could be a lesbian couple, female and female. And what we wanted to do with this bill is ensure that there was equality across the board in terms of leave. And so what I did is I fashioned it so that we now have, rather than a distinct maternity and paternity leave, we have one catch-all parental leave category, and this parental leave will apply to everybody, mothers, fathers, adoptive parents, and same-sex couples, as they may. So we now have, rather than maternity leave, we have a new category under 4107 that is called pregnancy-related medical leave. And under pregnancy-related medical leave, a woman who gives birth to a child will now have two weeks of leave. She's a distinct category, and this relates specifically to her. And then with the other cases, we have parental leave where, as is with the law, a mother who gives birth, or a father will now, or a father who has a child born to him, or a child adopted into his household, will still maintain the four weeks of paid administrative leave. So that has not changed. All that's changed is the birth mother now has an additional two weeks. What my bill does also is it takes care of some of the concerns that were pointed out specifically when we spoke to the Department of Administration, and that was the application of leave. If people were to take an additional leave, which is a combination of sick leave, or unpaid leave, or annual leave, and what my bill does is it very succinctly tells you what you may do, and what order of leave must be taken, so that it is consistent across the board. But I think it's also important to point out, in this bill, under the existing law, eligibility was defined as a, eligibility was defined as a female occupying a permanent position, or a male occupying a permanent position. Under present law, that permanent position usually applies only to classified employees. We know that that's not the way it's applied in Gov Guam presently, but the law spells it that way. So what my bill does is it makes it clear that we are now considering eligible female classified employees, and female classified employees, as well as male classified employees and female classified employees. So it is very clear that by law now, anyone who occupies a full-time position as a classified or unclassified employee in the government will be eligible for leave on the occasion of a birth or adoption of a child five years or under. I ask my colleagues to please consider this bill very favorably. What it is, is it not only modernizes and makes the leave practices more clear, more succinct, and more fair, but it is mostly a compassionate bill that takes into account the true physical needs of a mother upon the birth of a child, and how we have to, if you were to consider the usual postpartum recovery period as six weeks, this brings the paid administrative line leave in line with that six-week postpartum period. So it really is a compassionate bill, not only to help our employees get back on their feet and recover, but it also helps the employers and the employment environment by facilitating the recovery of employees, so that when they do come back to work after the birth of their children, that they are a little more whole than they would be if they didn't have this Sisus Mossi. I also want to point out that there is one edit that I'm going to make to my bill right now. We just noticed a typo as we were going through, and that'll be on page two, line 20. We are striking the word "or adoption" from line 20, because pregnancy-related medical leave is specific to a category of person who has just birthed a child.
On the amendment, to delete the word "or adoption." Objection, so ordered.
Sisus Mossi.
On the...
No, the, just to clarify, the bill, as further substituted on the floor incorporates all...
Yes, they're already included.
...all considerations. So this is the final version that we are reviewing. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. So Senator Munia Barnes, and then Vice Speaker.
Is there a "further substituted" or a "yes"?
Yes.
As further substituted on the floor?
Yes.
So there's two. I don't have that.
Can you please make sure all of the members?
Is it "further substituted"?
Add "further substituted." So you should have, in bold letters, "and further substituted on the floor." Please check your desk, I know that they were passed out. Thank you, Senator. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I truly appreciate the author's legislation, and really stand in support of the intent of Bill 248-33, and literally working with the, this paternity, maternity and paternity leave for all, for employees of Gov Guam. I do have a concern, or maybe an inquiry, on Section 2, if I may. She deletes, she deletes several portions, I mean, several lines of, for GCA, and one that comes to mind is, "Pregnancy-related medical leave shall consist of paid administrative leave not to exceed the 10 workdays," but it went from twenty, from almost three weeks to just 10 days. And if you count it the weekends, then, but you normally don't count that. So, and then, the authorization for, without approval from the employer supervisor, employee supervisor of the six months, that was also deleted, and I just wanted to know what the differences were based on the edits, because I see that there is provisions here for both male and female, but the changing of the days, and then also the authorization without the approval of the employee's supervisor.
Senator, do you yield to the questions? There are two questions, but we'll do one at a time.
Yes, I will yield to both. Thank you for asking that, and that's what makes this such a unique type of legislation, because now what we've done is, rather than having two claridigories of mother and father, we now have parental. Parental captures guaranteed four weeks of paid administrative leave to either a woman or a man, and it could be the woman who's adopting, it could be the lesbian woman spouse...
Senator, please address the chair, please.
Or address, thank you. So parental leave is the catch-all for all parents, regardless of your gender, or regardless of your marital status. That is where parental leave gives you the four weeks of paid administrative leave. The pregnancy-related medical leave is a two-week paid administrative leave just for the birth mother. So the way the bill is written, the birth mother has the benefit of both. She has the benefit of pregnancy-related medical leave, and she has the benefit of parental leave. So her total paid administrative leave will be six weeks. So we struck it this way, because now we're not having a distinct class, Madam Chair, of maternity and paternity, we're having parental. You are a parent, but if you are also a birth parent, the birth mother, we will give you two more weeks to recover medically. So that's why it was struck this way, but it is also, Madam Chair, brought up and accounted for in the parental leave section under 4107.1.
Senator?
Yeah, Madam Speaker, if I may, I just want to confirm with legal counsel to work with the numbers here, because I want to make sure that, based on her answer and opening up the opportunity to both male and female, that the, that what was, that's existing today is not taken away from the pregnant mother. So if I can just confirm with legal counsel, and you can come back.
I'm going to go to the next, yes, I'm going to go to the next speaker, Mr. Vice Speaker, and I give you an opportunity to come back. Mr. Vice Speaker, and then Senator Tom Etta.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, though I'm probably the only person in here that...
Yes, we know.
Doesn't have any. I rise in full support of this piece of legislation. Most recently, I've had the great honor of being christened Tata. And I had spoken to the author of this bill about the fact that I've noticed, at least in the case of my nephew, and her, and her son-in-law, what great assistance real engaged fathers, who deserved the title "father," provide in assisting, and how, I initially chided her about the fact that the additional time should also be given to the male to assist the mother during that very difficult period. I didn't realize how difficult it was watching the care of a newborn child, and how a real engaged father can provide invaluable assistance and support to the mother of the child. And so, but I think this is excellent legislation to, at least if there's been any complications that she has additional 10 days, and I know the question that was being asked was whether or not the time difference has been reduced, and my understanding is that it's not. The parental leave makes sure that both, both parents have 20 days, but the, but the woman who suffered through the, through the, either the natural childbirth or the cesarean section has an additional 10 days. So I think it's excellent legislation, and I commend the sponsor for this piece of legislation, because I really do think that it's imperative that people who assume responsibility of a child coming into this world, whether through natural birth to themselves, or by adoption, have the 20 days to bond with the child, and the importance of having that bonding, that bonding period for both male and female, and for the bonding period for even the adoptive parents to welcome a child. I mean, we had foster parents here the other day for one of my hearings, and to have a child come into the house that was adopted, to have that child feel welcome in that house, to have both parents there, is imperative, to make that child feel that this new place that they're at is their home. And I'm very happy that it has, up to the age of five, to try to make sure that, that both parents, I mean, I know members of our legislature who are probably, should be named model father or model parent because of the love that they have for the children that they've taken into their home, and, you know, you don't need to use the stepdad or my adopted dad or whatever. They are the father, and they give, they give credence to that name, "father." And I really, really appreciate the fact that we're trying to assist in that bonding period by giving them the 20 days, and then for the ones that had to go through the actual delivery or of the child, that they get an additional 10 days in the event that they need that for their recovery. So I rise in full support of this legislation and commend the author.
Welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker, on the motion, Senator Tom Etta, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the concept of the bill. However, I do have a question about the eligibility, the eligibility of employees. So in page two, starting there at line 25, or line 26, it talks about, "A eligible female employee is defined as a full-time classified or full-time unclassified employee." Okay, I'm fine with that. But should the employee be eligible for this leave benefit only if pregnancy occurs after they have become an employee? So in other words, an employee is picked up today, next month she becomes pregnant, and then, you know, so then nine months later, they're going to be wanting this leave. Would also the individual who, let's say, is now seven months pregnant, applies for a job, gets hired, and two months onto the job, is the benefits going to be provided to that individual? Or should it only be made applicable to pregnancy that occurs after employment, that has, you know, occurred after the employment has become effective?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
I'd like to thank my colleague for bringing that up. That was one of the considerations that we bantered with, even when we were discussing the issue with employers and with Department of Administration. I think what we have to be mindful about when we start talking about pregnancy is that we cannot put ourselves in a situation where we're discriminatory, and I know that there are certain considerations when you hire people. You cannot discriminate against a person who could potentially have a child, or who is, you know, with child at the time of hire. And what this speaks to is, the heart of this bill is to make sure that when you've got people who want to make a choice between being gainfully employed and contributing to an organization, and being a parent, having a family, that you give them the full opportunity to have both and not have to sacrifice one for the other. And one of the, you know, one of the most heartwarming testimonies came from such a person, one in the form of, actually, who appeared, who happened to be my daughter. And in her, in her words, one of the things she said is, you know, "Do not punish us for choosing us, for having us choose to have children." And I think that what I tried to do in this is to be very fair, and to ensure that we didn't have any semblance of discrimination whatsoever. So the way that I fashioned this bill is, we do give, it would provide for administrative leave regardless of the situation of the woman at the time she was hired, whether she was six months pregnant at the time she was hired, or whether she became pregnant, you know, during her probationary period. This bill even provides for that, what to do in cases where they're probationary employees still. I think that it, the spirit of, the spirit... I think that the spirit of the presidential memorandum, the spirit of the testimony and just the nature of wanting to ensure that we give our mothers the ability to be contributing members of an organization and to also be effective and healthy parents, would suggest to me that we consider that this type of administrative leave is afforded to them and that we don't have any semblance of discrimination against a woman who is with child.
Senator Etta was able to respond to your questions and you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And quite frankly, that causes me concern because then now it becomes an open-ended thing. I mean, can you imagine? I've got a lot of constituents out there, you know, I could return political favors to them and pick up several women who are seven months pregnant, eight months pregnant, on my payroll and they become eligible. So, I'm just very concerned that, you know, this opens a different door now that is kind of, quite frankly, kind of scary from a financial standpoint. And so, I would like to make an amendment to add at the end of line 27 on page two, the verbiage in defining an eligible female employee is that an eligible female employee is defined as a full-time classified or full-time unclassified female employee and whose pregnancy is determined to have occurred subsequent to employment. I mean, it's the same thing where I don't know how it works for health insurance. Maybe we've taken care of that where, you know, I can't sign up for an insurance policy today and usually they don't cover prior existing conditions. So, that, Madam Speaker, is the amendment that I would like to make and I certainly fully support the idea about, you know, encouraging, you know, encouraging these women or not having to put them in a position where they have to make a choice between should I work or should I, you know, raise a family or what? But I think we've got to define those parameters a little bit better and so the amendment that I'm making basically says that you're eligible if your pregnancy is determined to have occurred subsequent to employment. Thank you.
On the amendment, I have, we'll give the author first and then Senator Underwood. Senator Torres.
Madam Speaker, may I please request that legal counsel opine on that amendment before we proceed with the vote on it?
Okay, we're going to take a brief recess.
The legislature is back in session. Prior to the recess, we were on Senator Ada's amendment. And Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Gentlemen, we're back on.
Senators, please, we're back in session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, I've given it a lot of thought, and I think the best way to put it is that in the interests of preserving the well-being of the male species, I will withdraw my amendment. Thank you.
You're very welcome on that withdrawal. No objections. So ordered. Thank you, Senator. So that, I'm sorry, Senator Underwood, you can't speak on that amendment then. So I have Senator Blas on the list to speak. Is he here? He's not here. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Want to be recognized and given an opportunity to speak? No, on the main motion now. The amendment has been withdrawn. Senator Underwood.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of this very important bill, not only as a mother and also as a grandparent, grandmother. But you know, Madam Speaker, I really do commend the author for presenting this bill. I do know that from personal experience, in another country, Canada, Victoria, Canada, I believe they do give the mother and the mother at least a year with the baby. And, you know, I hope that we would get to that point when we recognize how important it is for us to invest in developing relationships within our family, in strengthening our family. I do know that there will be a tendency for those who would say, what is the fiscal impact? Because the Department of Education, for example, you would have, we have a large number of teachers. We have, and perhaps the majority of the teachers are mothers or are female, but we, you know, when they're not in the classroom, they would certainly need a substitute. But at this point, this is where we as a community should rise up and not count our pennies regarding the positive impact that we will have in the development of our, in the nurturing of our families, but that we would in fact start putting our families first, put our children first, and just as a whole, just really being more sensitive to what mothers go through when they give birth. So again, I commend the good center from Santa Rita, and I stand in full support of this bill. I'm looking forward to that day when we can amend it to extend the time to even perhaps three months or six months. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I applaud the author for the idea and the intent of the legislation. I do have a couple of concerns with some of the language. First off, on page two, and basically line 16, sorry, from line 14, "Pregnancy-related medical leave shall be granted to an eligible female employee as a result of pregnancy, childbirth, or medically related conditions to pregnancy or childbirth." Then it goes on to say that "Pregnancy-related medical leave shall consist of paid administratively not to exceed 10 workdays encompassing the date of the childbirth." My concern here is that recognizing that as a result of the pregnancy, there may be pregnancy-related conditions that need to be tended to prior to the childbirth. Now, if the female, if the lady is, needs to get that medical attention, while it falls under this category that she can use leave, on the pregnancy-related medical leave, what so happens is as if the amount of leave necessary to tend to that, I guess, that issue, the pregnancy issue, exceeds the amount of leave afforded here, but then is outside the realm of the date of childbirth. She may have in the case because of a condition, medical condition, she could exhaust all of that leave as a result of that pregnancy-related medical condition, then what leave does she have afterwards? Or will that become an issue? So I guess that's a, first off, that's the first concern I posed to the author, and if the author can yield to that question, or is there a necessity to be able to separate that out? I applaud that, and you know, I see the need, and I know that there are some ladies that, you know, when they're pregnant, they have, you know, medical conditions as it was, you know, because of the pregnancy. I'm just concerned that using this is going to expend all of that leave prior to the childbirth.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Thank you for the question. I think what we have to also take into consideration is that the appointing authority and the employer supervisor also have the latitude to accommodate situations as they present themselves. I think that what this does is it takes care of a typical type of situation. Now, there, within the same body, we had other provisions for the type of leave sharing in catastrophic situations and whatnot, and I think that, I think that those sorts of accommodations do happen. I don't believe that keeping it within this harms it. I think what it does is it makes sure that the leave is applied properly for the situation, but should situations, extenuating situations warrant added leave, we do have within the parental leave, the authority of the agencies to grant up to 130 workdays, which is six months. Now, anything beyond that is also with the discretion of the employee to either grant leave on an unpaid basis, or, you know, using a catastrophic pool or shared leave basis. But in terms of pregnancy-related medical leave, it is my opinion after thoughtful consideration that perhaps it's best left this way so that it is a typical, very easy to apply leave, and anything beyond what is not typical or ordinary can be addressed with a combination of other options provided by law. Thank you.
Senator?
I appreciate it, Madam Speaker, but you know, I don't think any of us have a crystal ball. You know, in that we don't know, and we want the best environment for the, and I, you know, I want to make this better. I want to make it so that she doesn't, she doesn't have to worry about this. And, you know, you, she may go to the doctors because she's just feeling a little discomfort and was a little concerned, take leave to be able to take, have that doctor's visit, but as a result of that doctor's visit, it's something more complex. So we can anticipate that. And while I appreciate that, you know, we have that section C in page three, it's going to be very hard, difficult to ascertain and to determine when you can use that portion or when you have to stay to this portion. And I don't, just don't want that to be a doubt in anybody's mind with that. Again, I like the idea. It's just that if we're going to do that, and we're going to make sure, I just want to make sure that when she gives birth, she has that time. I don't want that time to be utilized or to be spent, you know, on the pregnancy-related condition that existed prior to the childbirth. And then give the authority to, you know, the appointing authority, say, well, you used it then, this much, you can only use this much here. Things are going to be counterproductive. So, you know, for discussion purposes, would it be then, because there is that protections provided in section C, would that then be prudent then to preserve that amount of time that should be available, that should be used after the childbirth, to protect that just for the childbirth? And strike the words "pregnancy" in section A? Because I can see where, you know, we want to make sure that there's that time, that additional time after the childbirth. I want to protect that. And it looks like we have the ability to be able to address the pregnancy-related issues in section C. So I guess that's my...
What are you suggesting to delete?
Delete pregnancies.
No, yeah, we're going to have to take a recess because... Legislature is back from recess. We're going to, from recess to another recess until 2:00 this afternoon, because I understand that the legal counsel is working with the proffer of, the author of an amendment. So until 2:00 this afternoon, we will continue where we've left off. Okay? Recession.